Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM Tuesday, June 7, 2022 Board Meeting. We're going to begin this morning with an invocation by Pastor John Dewberry, our Pledge of Allegiance. We can have everyone to stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for giving each of us traveling grace and mercy. And we're excited to know that you still have your hand on us. And Father, I thank you that you love us enough to allow us to do the things that we do. And Father, I pray that you bless this meeting. I pray that you give wisdom to the leadership of this county and give us the ability to pull off the things that you see fit for us to do. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following items have been pulled and will be placed on a future agenda. The county manager resolution repealing Resolution 19-4 to regard an impact fees, planning and zoning resolution approving impact fees, facility maintenance awarding a bid for janitorial services, county facilities annual contract, and to the court and public safety facilities. All of these items will be on a future agenda. Presentations, we're going to have recognition of county employee retirement. If we can have our Harold Cooper, HR.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, distinguished board members. I come before you today to honor Mr. Peter Johnson. Mr. Johnson served as a lieutenant in the Henry County Sheriff's Office for 16 years. We want to thank him for his undying commitment to serve the county of Henry. So we applaud him and his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have a presentation by the Atlanta Regional Commissioner, Commission, partner with Henry County to serve older adults.
Morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. It's great to be here this morning. My name is Jim Jaquish. I'm the local government liaison for the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes and talk very briefly about your representation on the ARC Board, which has changed a little bit because of the redrawing of everybody's districts for the census recently. So as you all know by state law, the chairperson of each county in our region is automatically on our board. So that's Chairwoman Harrell. She does a great job for us. And then each county is also allowed one mayoral representative on our board. Currently, all the mayors in Henry County have voted to make Anthony Ford of Stockbridge your mayoral representative. And Murphy Talmadge is your citizen member. He was appointed right after Chairwoman Harrell took office. She appointed Mr. Talmadge to be your citizen member. So he represents a citizen district, one of 15 citizen districts throughout the region. And it basically is all of Henry County and all of Rockdale County. And so those are your representatives on our board. If you have questions about ARC or anything, feel free to talk to them, or you can call me, and we'll help you out. And then real quickly, I want to tell you that we're kicking off work on our comprehensive economic development strategy. This is a regional economic development strategy where we work with all of your chambers. I saw somebody here earlier from the chamber or from the Economic Development Authority. And just to work on, to make sure that when we talk to companies who are thinking about coming to the Atlanta area, that we kind of all say, we're all singing from the same hymn book about Metro Atlanta when we talk to these companies. And then once they, once we get them to come to Atlanta instead of Denver, or Houston, or Seattle, or wherever, then you all can bicker amongst all the other counties and cities and determine where they're actually going to land. But we want them to come here first before, without, instead of going to another region around the country. And then secondly, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, as you know, is a huge opportunity for all the cities and counties around Metro Atlanta and around the country to build a lot of infrastructure and do a lot of good work. And so ARC is trying to wrap our arms around that and keep you informed about when there are funding opportunities available and how you go about receiving that funding. So bear with us as we try to figure everything out, and we'll do our best to keep you updated at that website you see there. And if you have questions, I'll be around after the meeting. And now I'm going to introduce my colleague Becky Kurtz. Becky manages our Aging and Independent Services Group, which is nationally recognized as a leader in this area and does tremendous work all over the region and right here in Henry County. So I'm going to let Becky talk to you a little bit about what her group is doing.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning and just share just a few minutes of what we at ARC have been doing in partnership with Henry County to help your constituents who are older. And so I wanted to give you a packet. Have they been distributed? Great, you have a packet. It has postcards in it. If you ever want more of those postcards, including in other languages, we are happy to send them in bulk to you so that you can share those with your constituents, as well as the resource guide that we provided. As the Area Agency on Aging, and this is a federal designation, as the Area Agency on Aging for Metro Atlanta, we're responsible for planning for the future of our rapidly growing aging population in this region, for providing services directly, as well as through partner, including Henry Senior Services and other nonprofits. And we also have a responsibility to do public policy advocacy. And I just have to do a shout out to the great folks at Henry County Senior Services, Sean Norris and his staff, who partner so closely with us in delivering services to your constituents. And also a shout out to you all for the support that you give so generously to that work. Throughout our region, older persons are wondering every day, how can they stay in their homes? How can they get the supports in their communities? And we provide a connection to that. We're sometimes called the front door to navigate a kind of complex number of services in the community. So in this situation, if Maria is asking, how can I stay in my home? She contacts ARC and our counselors can connect her to, if she qualifies, the services that are funded through Henry County Senior Services, such as home-delivered meals into her home. Or we might connect her to things she can pay for privately, or that other nonprofits are providing, or that Medicaid provides if she qualifies. Our counselors can help connect her to the variety of services in the community. And we call all of that Empower Line. That is our branding for services to older persons in our region. And you can do that through a telephone call to our counselors or through our empowerline.org website, which has a searchable function, so you can search for services available to you in Henry County. Your older population in Henry County is about 28,000 right now who are 65-plus. And that's about 12% of your population. A very high percent, more than a third of those, are living in households where the older individuals live alone. So that's a really important risk factor for folks to make sure they have the services they need to be healthy and thrive in their homes. ARC directly provides some services. So we help individuals who live in nursing homes transition to their homes and communities. And my apologies, that was supposed to not say Rockdale County, but it was supposed to say Henry County. I will change that and send you the correct one. But we also provide consultation and support to caregivers. We provide wellness education to classes and access to material aid, like emergency utility assistance and assistive technology, and connecting social-isolated older persons to volunteers. Last year, or this, actually this current year, that's about done, this state fiscal year, we provided over three-quarters of a million dollars to Henry County to provide case management, services in people's homes, and services in senior centers. We've also provided some COVID-related grants over the last couple of years, totaling more than a quarter of a million dollars to Henry County. This gives you a picture of last year, when we had our last full fiscal year, how many clients were served through ARC-funded services in Henry County. We also provide grants to several nonprofits that serve our entire region, and so certainly provide services in Henry County as well. Those include legal services, culturally appropriate information and referral, and respite vouchers that allow caregivers to get a break, either in their home by using a voucher to have someone come in and helps provide support while the caregiver gets a break, or even going to an adult day center so the caregiver gets a break. Looking forward, we're expecting over $800,000 in grants will come to you for aging services in the year starting July 1st. And we're hoping our contract to you for your approval will be in front of you very soon for that. And we're looking forward to that continued work in the future. I wanted to tell you a little bit about a special project that we've been working on and how that might impact your work in Henry County. We've been exploring, and the ARC Board has approved a plan for us to look at life expectancy within our region and the disparities. And what we're learning is if you look census tract by census tract, there is huge, there's a huge difference on where you live and what the average life expectancy is. So in Henry County, in the lowest life expectancy area, the average life expectancy upon birth today is 72 years. You also have a census tract where the life expectancy is 81, almost 82 years. Almost a decade difference in those census tracts. So what we've been trying to do, along with local partners, is better understand the reasons for those disparities, and are there any things we can do together with Henry County to address some of those disparities? This gives you a little picture of those highest and lowest life expectancy areas in Henry County, and how Henry County compares to the state and the nation. Our goal is to, and we welcome you to take a look more at this plan that we've developed that's really just starting this work. And what we're trying to do is better understand it and then work with you all and work with your constituents and your communities in thinking about solutions, knowing those are long-term, intergenerational, very complex solutions, which none of us on our own have a solution for sometimes. But working together, maybe we can move some levers on this. We have discovered that what provides length of life and what provides quality of life are things like our health behaviors, our clinical care and access to healthcare, but that's actually only 20% of what gives us a healthy, long life. So it's important, but it's not the only important thing. The social and the economic factors, and also our physical environment, also contribute to how long and how well we live. We've recently held a focus group in Henry County, and we have partnered with, helping in his name, a nonprofit, to co-vid a focus group, asking what's working well and what could help support longevity in this community with the lowest life expectancy. So if that's of interest to you, we're happy to dig a little deeper and show you more information about the outcome of that focus group. We've also been working with the Henry County Senior Services on mapping where the clients are that ARC funds and how they coordinate with those census tracts. Where do they overlap with those census tracts with lowest life expectancy? And what does that tell us about how well we're doing outreach, how well we're supporting those communities? And we're just now beginning to dive into understanding the impact of this kind of mapping. Eventually, we're hoping that through this partnership, we can identify and reduce inequities that create disparities in life expectancy, as well as in quality of life, build awareness of those disparities, build the capacity to address them. And ultimately, we would love it if we could altogether bring the lower life expectancy areas up to the regional average of life expectancy and improve their quality of life. We realize these are complicated goals and long-term, but one that we think are very worthy of our attention and focus. For more information, that's how to reach me. Again, I want to thank you for the generosity you all have shown in partnering with us and Henry County Senior Services to provide services for the older persons in your communities. If there's anything I can help you with, any questions or comments, I'm happy to take those. But otherwise, just a big thank you.
Thank you. Can we get this presentation Stephanie sent out to?
After my Rockdale changes to Henry? I'll do that as soon as I get back to the office. It somehow didn't, I just did a one to Rockdale recently, and my apologies for that. But we'll definitely share those slides.
Okay, great. Thank you. The Senate Commissioners, have any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Henry County Transportation Plan, Sam Baker.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the Henry County Board of Commissioners. After an entire year's work, I am absolutely thrilled and delighted to be here this morning to present the Henry County Transportation Plan 2022 Update. A transportation plan makes an assessment of an area's existing transportation infrastructure. Then it looks to a future year, in our case, year 2050, and projects how many people will be in the area, how, how many jobs will be in this area, how many students will be enrolled in schools and colleges? Because those are the factors that drive traffic on the road. So what this plan does is it looked at Henry County's existing infrastructure, and then it came up with a list of recommendations for improvements to the transportation infrastructure by year 2050, and it breaks down those projects into short-term, mid-term, and long-term. In this project, we, there was extensive citizen engagement. We were at the last Geranium Festival in McDonough Square, talking with hundreds of people all day. We had a total of five public information open houses and two online surveys. Plus, we worked with representatives from the four municipalities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton. So this is a joint city-county transportation plan. I had the pleasure of working with Michael Cray and Pond &amp; Company on this project. Michael Cray has been the project manager. I will ask Michael to present the transportation plan update.
All right, thank you, Sam. Good morning, and thanks for having us here today. Like Sam said, this is a culmination of a lot of work, and we're really excited about where we're at. Quickly, background, you know, this is a process that, a planning process that gets updated every five or six years. The last plan was updated in 2016. The CTP program is a funding partnership with the Atlanta Regional Commission. It's a collaboration between the county and all of the cities. That's very important, as well as collaboration with other implementation partners like GDOT and ARC. We're making a lot of recommendations with this 2022 update. And some of the most important transportation issues you see on your screen here, like traffic congestion, safety, quality of life, health, equity, and things like that. So we're really trying to address a lot of different parts of the transportation system through these recommendations. And the result, ultimately, you know, what you really want out of this is a prioritized list of projects that can be then taken and funded and implemented, so you get the benefits of the planning process. So, so this is, so you've all seen this information. We've presented this to you before. But the different types of projects that we're recommending are roadway capacity projects. We're recommending both widening projects and new road projects here. There's 33 proposed new projects, either widenings or new roadways in this planning process. That's on top of 41 fully funded projects that you've already funded through SLOST and T-SLOST, and also in partnership with the state of Georgia. We're recommending over 60 different intersection improvement projects. Those are projects that have been identified through either safety concerns or congestion bottlenecks. And they range in scale from small scale to large scale. Something small scale might be going in and refreshing the striping, maybe doing something with a traffic signal or a stop sign, upgrading the stop control of the intersection, all the way up to larger-scale projects where you might be installing a roundabout or something big like that. We're also recommending a set of projects called arterial upgrades. These are really safety improvements, but they're along a linear segment of a roadway net system there. So we've identified those really through safety concerns, as well as some roadways that really handle a lot of traffic that might not be, might not have been originally built to handle that type of traffic. Think of a road like Chambers Road, where that really, especially in the peak periods, it really functions as a kind of an alternative to the I-75, handles a lot of traffic. But it's really a collector road with no shoulders, no turn lanes, and things like that. So that's the type of roadway that can be upgraded through this arterial upgrade program. It would provide a lot of safety benefits, but it wouldn't classify as a road widening necessarily. So we've got about 40 of those projects. We've also identified a number of sidewalk projects. We've got about 175 different sidewalk projects, about 200 linear miles. So this would represent a significant investment into the, to the walking infrastructure in the county and really improve pedestrian safety and quality of life in the county. So Sam went through this earlier, but just wanted to reiterate that this plan was really focused on community engagement throughout the entire process. We had a stakeholder committee that met three different times. We went out to the public with open houses, four in-person and one virtual. We did different pop-up events throughout the county. Like Sam said, we were at the Geranium Festival. We set up a desk at Henry County Youth Basketball League through the Parks and Rec Department. We spent a day at the park. We went out to a park and talked to people there. And we even went on a bike ride with the Southern Crescent Cycling Club. And I actually was on my bike on that. It was a great ride and a lot of good input from that community. And we've also had a online presence throughout the entire planning process through surveys and a website and an online mapping tool. We've really focused on municipal outreach as well. All the municipalities were represented on the project management team. And in addition, we've gone out to them and spoke to them directly at workshops with the municipalities when we're talking about the Trails Plan and the CTP recommendations. So we're really trying to coordinate between the county and the cities, because obviously, transportation issues do not follow jurisdictional lines. And so we think we have a really good coordination there. So next steps, there will be a formal resolution on your June 21st meeting to adopt the CTP on the 21st. So I am going to move on to the Trails Plan next, but I didn't know if we wanted to stop here for any questions about this, the CTP at this point.
My question is, I love the plan that you're putting forth, and thank you for the efforts. I have been following along with you guys and watching this, because this is the one area we get so many questions about, transportation in Henry County. And I wanted to know, along with your presentations, when will you start presenting financial needs to support it?
So we have a financial, we have a overall cost estimate that we've come up, we're still trying to make sure that we have a, to finalize that 100%, and as well as financial or revenue projections out to 2050. And those will be complete this week, and then we can have that shared with you as soon as possible before you.
And another thing I noticed that you did, and it's great that you've had conversations with the municipalities here, and I noticed also you put in their projections coming from T-SLOST and SLOST and GDOT. Have you also, in your financials, put in what you expect municipalities to contribute toward the success of this plan?
Yeah, so, yes, so projects that would be in the municipality, we would, we're assigning those to a municipality responsibility. And so, and so, yes, we are considering overall funding for the plan, including the municipalities. And so that would be kind of broken out between the county and the cities.
And last but not least, we have been getting, I know I have in my emails, about federal dollars that are coming down to, in reference to sidewalks and encouraging municipalities to get prepared to try to secure some of those grants. Will you have the capacity, and this may be a county manager's question, I'm not sure, will you have the capacity to try and participate in that grant process? Or will we need to try and get support for you to get a grant writer to help you with that?
Yeah, so this CTP process would, will not involve any sort of grant writing. However, we do hope this sets you up for that. So you will have a prioritized list of projects with cost estimates that you can, that would make good grant opportunities. And when we come to the Trails Plan, we have three specific trail segments that will really make sense for that. But our scope does not include any of that actual grant writing.
So we have to look other ways to get that. Okay, thank you so much for answering my questions.
Commissioner Thomas, just to let you know, we've already been having conversations with regards to funding that's coming down for transportation. We were just in Flavilla, Georgia, meeting with OSOP and Warnock's staff, along with some of the congressional leader's staff. And so there is funding that is coming down. Once they complete this, then we'll see which of our projects will fit various fundings. But there is funding that's for trails, for block railroad crossings, you name it. They've got all various types of transportation funding. And so myself and Sam sit on a call just about, well, monthly with regards to transportation and the dollars that are coming down. So we will be putting our projects forth. Sam, you want to come and speak on that a little bit?
Thank you.
I just want to mention one thing, that there's a lot of money coming down from the federal government, but there is a catch. All this federal money requires a 20% local match. So we have to keep that in mind, that to get 80 federal dollars, you have to come up with 20 local dollars. If you don't have the 20, you don't get the 80. So we just have to keep that in mind. We have passed the T-SLOST. That's a great thing. But we have to think in mind, okay, where are we going to come up with a local match in order to take advantage of all these federal dollars coming our way, including money for sidewalks you just mentioned?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Clem.
Yes, Sam. While you're up, I know that the sidewalks, trails, and widening is a huge part of the plan, but research and data has shown us that street lighting is a big part of mobility and safety. In 2020, I started talking about the streetlights and the county needing streetlights, and when we're improving these roads, we should be adding streetlights. I think there's only one road that has been impacted and has finally gotten them, and that was Jonesboro Road. But we still need streetlights. I don't see any streetlights in this plan. And prior to adoption, I would love for this board to take some action on something that we talked about in 2020, and we're still talking about it, on these streetlights throughout the community. I think those are immediate things that we can do to impact the mobility and the safety of our community. And so prior to the adoption, I would love to see where our streetlights are going to fit immediately in the plan and in the future.
You're correct. That is not a recommendation that is in the CTP, anything about street lighting. I think something that could be definitely put in there would be some sort of a policy on streetlight, street lighting. I mean, we could look into specific locations that might need them. But definitely a policy, because I'm not sure if the county has any sort of policy on street lighting and how it should be implemented.
If you recall, Commissioner Clem, we did a resolution for this board to allow us to award a contract to a consultant to do just what Mr. Cray is saying, identify those areas. I do recall the board did identify some specific street locations, but I think you all wanted us to take it a step further. So we can certainly knock the dust off of that, bring it back to the board for consideration. But we've already started the preliminary work on that and was in the process of getting ready to award a contract to a consultant for that. So we can certainly bring that back.
Yeah, I would just say that I know that Atlanta's doing street lightings, but we started with this in 2020, and now we put it on the shelf. So I would love, you know, if you could work with the chair to bring that back to us. And it's not in this plan, so that was concerning to me, that it should be in this plan.
We can definitely bring it back.
And we'll bring it back, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a part of the transportation plan. Yes.
One other question. You've addressed a lot of different connectivity in your plan, which is great. One of the things that I've noticed that not only the nation, but other countries are moving to is trying to add in that element of mobility with bikes and different types of bikes. And I'm not talking about motorbikes, I'm talking about more the bicycles, even the three-wheel bicycles are coming for seniors to help them get around even better. Will we have any type of extended sidewalks, areas in your plans that will allow that to happen? I noticed when I was traveling today, trying to see some seniors trying to get up and down our little narrow sidewalks. But would that be a part of the plan to have extended sidewalks or something of that nature that will encourage a healthier community by biking as well?
Our next presentation is the Henry County Trails Plan, which will probably address your question that we have come up with it, countywide trail network. The transportation plan portion came up with 200 miles of sidewalks. So we have a great need of sidewalks, but the trails plan addresses multi-use paths and side paths along roads that are wide enough for bicycles, rollerblading, walking, jogging. So we're going to address that in just a minute, in the next presentation. Okay. Shall we move on to the next presentation? In 2016, Henry County prepared its last transportation plan. The 2016 Henry County Comprehensive Transportation Plan provided a map with some ideas for trails all over the county. And then the transportation plan recommended that Henry County develop a countywide trails plan. Henry County, however, did not act on this recommendation in 2016 through 2019. I joined Henry County at the end of 2019. In 2020, I came before you and proposed that Henry County follow up on the 2016 plan's recommendation and develop a countywide trails plan. You went along with my suggestion and approved funding to develop a trails plan. Thanks to your support, we now have a Henry County Trails Plan for your consideration and adoption. This trails plan was developed over the past one year with extensive citizen engagement. We worked closely with the local Southern Crescent Cycling Group, plus we worked with the representatives from the four municipalities. Michael Cray, again, was the project manager of this trails plan development. He will share with you the trails plan. I just want to touch base that this trails plan provides a vision of what a countywide trails network will look like. We have come up with a name for Henry County's trails network to be called Henry Trails, and we have come up with a logo that will identify trails as part of Henry County's trails network. So, Michael, please share with them about the Henry County Trails Plan.
All right. So what you're seeing on the screen here is the proposed network. This is the framework to be built on for the future for Henry County Trails. And Commissioner Thomas, as you were asking about, you know, these wider trails for cycling and things like that, this is exactly what this network is. All of these would be proposed as either a greenway trail operating on its own right-of-way, you know, something like the Silver Comet Trail or the Big Creek Greenway within a natural setting, or a side path, which would be a wide 10 to 12-foot multi-use path adjacent to a roadway. So what you're seeing on the screen in the green and brown is that proposed network. So there's 87 different projects that we've identified, and it's got geographic coverage throughout the whole county. And it would provide connectivity to some very important destinations. Some things that we focused on in coming up with a network were connectivity to parks and schools and denser population centers. So this network, when built out, this will definitely, we understand this is a long-term vision, it's not going to be on the ground next year, but when built out, it will provide connectivity, healthy options, economic development options for Henry County. So, so, yeah, so we have these projects, we have, you know, cost estimates and things like that. But we've also done some other things to support the trail network during this planning process. For example, logos and wayfinding, this is what Sam was talking about. So we've come up with a trail logo, and this was, you know, voted on by the community through a community survey. And what you have here is a customizable logo that can give you a consistent brand throughout the county while still letting you know where you're at. So you could be in Henry Trails in Stockbridge, or Henry Trails in unincorporated Henry County, or in Locust Grove, and you'd be able to differentiate your areas while still having that consistent brand. And so this would really help to get the word out for the network and let people know where they are as you build out the system. And so we've also developed some different wayfinding recommendations, both on how to develop your signage and kind of where to put it. And this will be consistent with the logo, the logo work that we've done, that you can put your branding on your different wayfinding signage. We've also included trail design guidelines that you can use when building out the system. Like I was saying before, we recommend a 12-foot multi-use path would be ideal. That is not feasible in every situation, but you want to have at least a minimum of 10 feet to be considered a multi-use trail, where you can do walking and biking. And so we've included different design guidelines for side paths, greenways, and things in natural areas. And then importantly, this is probably really kind of the most exciting single piece of this project, are the model miles. So we selected three different segments of the trail network, and we did a deep dive into these areas. So we did, in Hampton, we looked at the Towahliga River Greenway, which would connect from downtown Hampton to the Hampton School Cluster on Hampton-Locust Grove Road. It would cross Highway 20. We looked at the Fairview roadside path in the northern part of the county, which would provide connectivity from the Fairview kind of commercial area all the way over to the Austin Road Middle School, where the current path from, coming over from Panola Mountain, currently dead ends. And then we looked at a Camp Creek Greenway in McDonough. All of these projects make great sense, they're going to provide great connectivity, and we really think they'll get a lot of use as kind of these standalone projects. And these can kind of create your spine, which you can build off of. And so the good thing about these is we've gone down, we've created, we've identified a preferred alignment, we've looked at all the existing conditions, we have detailed cost estimates. And you can take this information, and this will make a ready application. We have all the data you need to make funding applications to whomever, you know, whether it's ARC or going directly to FHWA or GDOT, you have this information. And these are the three pieces that are really set up for implementation in the short term. And so to kind of go along with that, we've also provided some renderings of different locations along these model miles. Like, for example, this is in downtown Hampton at the terminus of one of our, the Towahliga River Greenway, and this is on Main Street and, I believe, Oak. And this is a perfect opportunity here. It's currently a city-owned, basically vacant lot, which would make a great option for a gateway, kind of a trailhead there, which would also be a gateway into the downtown area. So there's a lot of different ways that the trail plan can really support economic development and quality of life as this gets built out. And so that is the gist of the Trails Master Plan.
Can you go back to the slide that talks about the sidewalks with the bicycle? Right, yeah, that one right there.
Yes.
So along these trails and stuff, are there lighting, will there be lighting along here? Has that been part of?
Yeah, so we have some safety and safety recommendations that are in the plan as well, which would include call boxes and lighting and things, lighting recommendations along these. So, yeah, we would recommend lighting these multi-use paths. Yes.
Along the trails, and I'm excited about this, as you can see, I really am. Along the trails or the biking areas in your plan, are you adding a security system as well? Will there be so many miles, camera boxes, or so many miles, what are those stations for emergencies? I'm not sure what you would call the towers or, is that a part of your design here?
Yeah, we, yes, we do have recommendations for safety and security along the network. And that will also be included into the actual design of these trails. So this is not, it's not quite at design level, but as you get to that, to that design piece, those are considerations that should be taken into account, and we have recommendations within the trail plan for just those types of concerns, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from any other board members? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sharon, can we make sure that we bring a resolution back so that we can award, so that we can look at the lighting? Yeah, the lighting along the various corridors, because there, we do have arterial areas that are in desperate need of lighting. And if you all could bring a resolution back to the board for us to consider, then that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes.
I do want to say thank you to this board, and especially to our county manager and our human resource director, because I remember when we really gave you a little of a stickler of a time to try to bring to life our transportation needs in Henry County, and you went out and you found Mr. Baker. And Mr. Baker, thank you for being actively bringing these things consistently back to the board. You've got a good one here, and he's really making sure that we stay focused on transportation in Henry County, and I want to thank that team for doing just that. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, next, we'll have our consent agenda. We'd have our county manager, Sharon Matthews, come forward, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Vice Chair. And again, I echo those comments, Commissioner Thomas, regarding Mr. Baker. He has definitely hit the ground running, so thank you, Sam, for your diligence. Our consent agenda for Tuesday, June 7, 9 a.m. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,751.22 square feet of right-of-way and 2,005.08 square feet of permanent easement by negotiated contract or condemnation. This is for Rockcory Road, parcel number 74, located in District 4. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,628.65 square feet of right-of-way, 2,052.98 square feet of permanent easement, again, by negotiated contract or condemnation. This is for Rockcory Road, parcel number 14, located in District 4. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 4,448.87 square feet of right-of-way, 2,056.79 square feet of permanent easement, and 1 square foot of driveway easement by negotiated contract or condemnation, again, for Rockcory Road, parcel number 7, located in District 4. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,006 square feet of right-of-way by negotiated contract or condemnation. This is for Peaksville Road, parcel number 28, located in District 1. And then we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 306,226.80 square feet of property by negotiated contract or condemnation. This, too, is on Peaksville Road, parcel number 2, located in District 1. Under the fire department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners appointing Fire Chief Jonathan Burnett, Deputy Fire Chief Stacy Ponder, Assistant Chief Billy Petit, and Lieutenant Sam Polk to the Region for West Georgia Emergency Management Services Advisory Council. Under the police department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing a request by the Henry County Police Department to apply for and accept a grant in the amount of $106,035 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, BJA, United States of Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Patrick Lehe Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program for the purchase of body armor vests for sworn officers. Under planning and zoning, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving an amendment to the Henry County Planning and Zoning Fee Schedule related to FEM permit fees. Under SPOST, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a supplemental agreement for Heath and Lineback Engineers in the amount of $69,141,04 on design of flipping road extension utilizing SPOST 5 funds located in District 2. We also have a resolution approving a bid award for asphalt patch, crack sealing, and high-density mineral bond application, commonly referred to as HA5, on 25 county roads to Blunt Construction Company in the amount of $350,267. This will be T-SPOST funds. Under stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve RFP number 22-19 for an update of the Henry County Flood Plane to House Moran Consultant, Inc., from Kennesaw, Georgia, in the amount of $2,284,000 using ARPA funds. And then under transportation planning, we have a resolution to accept a Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Grant in the amount of $30,000 from Partnership for Inclusive Innovation. This ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. All in, any questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to our regular agenda. SPOST, resolution approving the bid award for resurfacing.
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Resolution before you is approve the bid award for the resurfacing of various county roads to Blunt Construction Company in the amount of $25,018,289. Steel bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for resurfacing 86 roads in the county, and we received four sealed bids. Blunt Construction Company provided a low bid of $25,018,289. Here we're showing where the funding's coming from, from Here we're showing where the funding's coming from, from SPOS 5, T-SPOS, and L-MIG. These roads are in all five districts. Staffs recommended the award to Blunt for the 86 roads. This is the bid tab showing the four bids and what their pricing. This shows all the roads that are going to be on this resurfacing. Something we're doing a little bit different, not only is this the projects, the roads, this will be on the website, the T-SPOS website. We have a new pavement management plan in the county. We've added the column on the right-hand side for the road rating. So as a citizen, you can go in, you can see where your, what roads are going to be resurfaced in your district, and you can also see the score that that road has received. And obviously, we try to take the poor roads and fix those so we can get them up in better shape. And again, all this will be on the T-SPOS County website. Have any questions?
Thank you, Ron. Are there any questions from the board? All right, so can I, I'd like to call for a motion to approve. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
A resolution authorizing staff to enter into a professional service agreement. Alex?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission. This is a resolution to request approval for a feasibility study for a new consolidated county operation building to Goodwin Mill and Cowood GMC LLC in an amount of $159,000. The purpose of the study is to determine the space need to consolidate the existing Henry County field offices into one new Henry County field office building. The field operations department include in this study are DOT, Stormwater, SPOS, Fleet and Building Maintenance Departments. For this reason, two proposals were received and scored, and GMC received the highest score and provided a cost estimate for $159,000. As a result, staff recommends approving RFP number 22-12 for a feasibility study for a future consolidated county field operation building to GMC in the amount of $159,000. Now, as far as the location is, we have an approximately 10.2 acres of land and the intersection of Highway 20 and Phillips Drive, where currently we are restoring the mulch across the street from Stormwater. And this location, it's, it has a very good visibility from both sides. And this new building is going to face both sides of the streets. Now, this building, we are proposing to target a lead platinum level, which is the leadership in energy and environmental design. And some of the features that this building will provide is rooftop solar panels, innovative water recycling, native landscaping, green roof, bicycle rack, indoor environmental facilities such as skylights and carpets with low CO2 emission, and LED fixtures. Now, the benefits of this building will include, and it will enhance the economic development by revitalizing the neighborhood and to increase home values, improve customer service as a one-stop shop. It will increase security and opportunities to host training classes and a possible 911 center. Now, this is a, an idea of how this building is, it may be looking. And in this fashion, this is a steel and glass building with solar panels on top, and all the features as I specified. If there are any questions? More than that. Commissioner Clemens?
Alex, you have in this presentation the benefit, the needs, the specs, and sustainable features of the building, even pointed out the location. Can you tell me why this is a good use of funds to spend $159,000 for a feasibility study if you've already identified that there's a need and a benefit in the specs? Why are we spending the $159?
Yes, ma'am. What we get out of this is a space need analysis and also an architectural rendering, a 3D rendering that will show how this building looks like and approximate cost. And the consultant will come before us and run through animated presentation. At that time, we will get a better idea of, you know, if this is something that we would like to entertain. But so to answer your question, this is not only just a need analysis. They will come with a rendering, how the site would look like, the site layout and the building, how big it would be, how much it would cost. And we will get a 3D animation to go through each floor to explore how it looks like.
So Sherri, normally when we do these buildings, we do the, the design team will do all of that. Will we have to still come back and do a design? Yeah, we've got to still come back. So why wouldn't we just hire one consultant to do all of that?
So it's my understanding from staff that we wanted to first determine the feasibility, what the cost would be, what the initial upfront cost would be, so that the board could give us some direction in terms of whether we wanted to proceed. We could certainly go back to the table. We would have to throw this proposal out and ask for a consultant that can not only do the feasibility, the location, but also to give us the cost in terms of the design. What we wanted to do was to make sure that we're affording everybody an opportunity to bid on it. So we only received two proposals for the feasibility piece. For the construction, I'm sure we will receive more than those two proposals. But if it's the wishes of the board for us to go back and look at an all-inclusive package, we could certainly do that.
I just want to make sure maybe the board understands this, but normally when we do this, we get one team that does all of it, so it's not broken down. And I know that with all of the buildings that we've done before, Lynn has done an amazing job, Ron, and even with Parks with JP, they just put out one bid and everything is included. You don't have to have three different people participating.
So the only difference with that is those are typically SPOS projects where we have already identified the need and we've already had the property identified. I think what Mr. Mahajer is trying to do is to, one, determine if it's feasible to utilize the location that he believes to be the most appropriate, but also be able to accommodate the departments that will be impacted by it. So that's, that's the difference.
That company can do all of that. The company that does the design and the location, they can do all of it. That's how we deal with the.
But they may not be able to do the feasibility piece.
Also, also what this does is, this is, if you assume that if a preliminary part of the design, and we will pay it once, so when we award the design, this part is already paid. So this amount, it will be subtracted from the next award, which is for the full design. So they will not be repeating two things at the same time. This is just for this feasibility study.
And I think what Commissioner Clemens is referring to is typically we do design bill, where they come in, they do the design, and then they award the contract for the contractor to actually do the construction. This is not a design bill. This is a feasibility.
But Alex has already done the feasibility. We know that there's a need for this. We already know that. We know that the specs, you defined what you want the specs to be. You know there's a need. So I just don't see why we're paying $159 for somebody to tell us that, and then they're adding something that can be done in the entire process. So that's just my thoughts. I would prefer him to just do one, one time.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'm just pretty much covered everything I was going to ask. But in that, could you back up a couple of slides to show us what was included in this feasibility study?
Well, as I mentioned before, this building is targeted for a platinum lead features, which includes these items but not limited to those. And they will come up with a space need analysis. They will come up with a rendering. They lay out the design. They lay out the parking. It's going to have a parking deck. They come up with the building, the size of the building, how the office is going to look like. They're going to come up with the 3D rendering. So, so a lot of the work is already, is done. So whoever the next company will pick over, they would piggyback on this one, so they will not repeat the same thing.
So we did a design build. How much do you estimate that would be involved in this process, in a design build?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. The reason for this is to come up with the size of the building. We would project our staff, as we wish, the body, to be housing this building for the next 10, 15 years. And we'll come up with the size and square footage, and we'll have a pretty good idea how much a steel and glass building, something like this, if that's the agreement, will cost, and so we'll come up with an idea how much it costs.
I have a hard time, I have a hard time with the $159 as well, just to do a feasibility.
It will come with a cost estimate. They'll tell us how much a building.
But if we knew what it would cost, if we do a design build, what part of that design build would be absorbed in what we're doing through the feasibility? That's where I'm trying to.
Yes, Commissioner. Any type of a design build, based on my experience, will include a reconnaissance and feasibility analysis. So the first step of any design build is a feasibility, if this makes sense, if, if what we have in mind is tangible. So, so any company who does that, this is the first thing. We're just breaking it down in two phases. And with all the means, you know, we have no problem to come before the board to offer a one-time, one step.
So we did a design build. There will be $159,000 in that design build?
Yes, it will be less than that amount, because we already are paid for it.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Chair, I make a motion to approve with the understanding that this $159 would also be involved in a design build if we went to a design build. So you're saying this is the first step, right?
Yes, sir.
So you're just breaking it up in different phases?
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to doing just one?
That's what I want to make sure. This was going to be included in the design build. We'll do phase one, then we'll go to the design bill. Okay.
So, so this would be an attachment to our next RFU or RFQ. So they say you will take, the consultant, take this from where it is right now and land it.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve under them directions from Alex.
Got a motion? Got a second? Any further discussion? Commissioner Thomas?
I understand what you're trying to accomplish, Alex. My question is, when we put this out for bid, how are we going to make sure that they don't add in or subtract out that additional $159,000? That's going to be the problem right there. I think, I see what you want to do is have this feasibility done. Whatever company gets the design bill, if they cannot complete the feasibility, as you stated, they may not be able to complete that element, that's their responsibility to get their consultant to complete the feasibility and get it back to us. I don't see us doing it on their behalf. So if we go as we've traditionally done it, as Commissioner Clemens had stated, we do a design bill, and this consultant said, well, we don't do the feasibility part of it. If you want this contract, then you get your consultant to do your feasibility part and send us the whole package. I have a problem being able to substantiate that whoever gets the final bid is going to pick up from where we start, because it's so easy for them to say, well, your previous consultant made a mistake in their projections on such and such and so, and now we have a cost overrun on this. We have so little way to hold them accountable, to stay within these parameters, because they can come in and do some other things. I much prefer to have the one package. If that one package provider cannot provide the feasibility that you're looking for, it is their responsibility to get a consultant on their end to make that part happen and present us a complete package for control process.
Commissioner Thomas, if I may interject, hold one second for me, Alex, please. The, the only challenge with doing it that way is that you have no control over what that consultant's going to have to pay another consultant to do the feasibility. Now, if we put a proposal out for a design bill, we're telling contractors, we are ready to design this building, and we have the funding that's allocated to go ahead and build this facility. With the approach that we're taking at this point, we're allowing a consultant to come in, tell us what the cost will be, and let us determine, okay, is this feasible for us to take on at this point? If this board says, hey, this cost is much higher than what we expected, then there's no loss there. We have the study completed, and if we want to come back in another year and put it out to bid, we can do it. My only fear in us moving forward with not doing this piece of it is that if we put it out, we're saying we have all intentions on building this building. And I don't know if that's, if the price are going to come in. I can tell you with a LEED certified building, you're probably talking anywhere from eight to $10 million for this type of facility. We haven't yet identified what the funding source is going to be. We are doing very, very preliminary work. We know that we have a need. We know that currently the facilities that we have over at Work Campground aren't conducive for what we see in, in terms of expanding our growth. The other thing is while Alex has suggested the 10-acre tract of land, this consultant may come back and say, not only do you have environmental issues, but this property is not going to be conducive for what you all are trying to do. And so they'll provide us with some additional recommendations, maybe not this location, but another location. While Alex has in his mind what works for Stormwater, there are multiple other departments that have to be considered. So the consultant will meet with those departments, look at their current needs, and look at their future needs. So that is one of the reasons why we're trying to do the study first, one, to determine if we can afford it, but also to make sure that that is, that the funds that are going to have to be allocated at this board will, will support the funding for it.
Well, thank you so much for that information. My, my question goes back to what he said originally. It's that whoever comes in to take on the contract itself, the first step is feasibility. So my answer to that would say, if that's the first step, the whole design bill element of feasibility comes first. And at that stage, if it's determined that we're not going forth in the RFP or the RFQ, it should state, based upon, just like we do traffic studies and everything else, based upon this element would determine whether or not we go forth. I wasn't trying to eliminate the process. I was trying to include the process in the one step, just like we've done in other areas.
So this approach is similar to what we did, Commissioner Thomas, with our Judicial Center. I don't know if you were on board at that time, but a feasibility study was done first. The consultants met with the various judicial partners to determine what their spacing and operational needs were. And then after that study was completed, it was presented to the board. At that time, there were various options that were presented, option 1, 2, and 3, in terms of what we thought we could afford. Today, we are now in the process of construction or the design for the Judicial Center. So there are multiple ways that we could approach this. I think one of the other questions you posed is, you know, if we hire a contractor to come in and actually do the construction, how do we know that they're going to follow the feasibility? Well, that's going to be all determined in terms of how the scope of work is written. So when our staff develops that scope of work, they will say, hey, we've already completed a feasibility study. The consultant must follow this feasibility study as approved by the Board of Commissioners, and this is the intent of what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Is there another discussion?
Yeah. Sherri, you brought up another point, that this building could cost eight to $10,000. Yeah. Chair, you brought up another point, that this building could cost eight to ten million dollars.
Or more.
Or more. And that's not including the land that we would have to buy. So even, I'm even more, um, determined not to support this, to spend a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, because I think that we have some more pressing needs to spend a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars than to just do a feasibility study for something that we're not even ready to fund. Um, so, I mean, I think there are some other ways and some other feasibility studies that we probably need that are on the list of capital projects. Um, a couple of years ago, we keep talking about what we did before that has not moved forward. We did a list of the buildings and the needs of the county. And we've not moved on those things. I would much rather see us updating the judicial system plan or some of the other buildings that we have on there than to do a building that we definitely don't have eight to ten million dollars to be building. So I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for letting us know what we were looking, even if the feasibility study comes back, it's gonna be years before we have eight to ten million dollars to do this facility.
So, we do have funding available, because, um, Stormwater is a part of it, we will be able to utilize some of our Stormwater funds. And depending on the other departments, if we were to move sploths, we can utilize, um, funding for, for that as well. Now, the other thing is a lot of the buildings that we're talking about, like the Judicial Center, that is moving. We are knee-deep in terms of moving with that. I think our team has met with some consultants who are part of the process in terms of that facility, and you are correct, we have presented to this board a facilities plan. But I will tell you, for those board members that have not had an opportunity, I would invite you to travel with me over to our Work Campground where we house our fleet services, our DOT, our Stormwater, and our fire training center. It is open to anyone that wants to show up. We've had vehicles that have been stolen from the yard. Um, it's very open to the public, and the new McDonough Parkway will run parallel to the facility. And so this is a need. This is not just a want. This is definitely a need and a priority for us as we continue to grow as a county, but also as we, as we expand our employee workforce. Right now, we're in the process of trying to rehab facilities so that we'll have places for our employees to go. So it is definitely a need, um, and, and I am, the eight to ten million is not an exaggeration. When you talk about this type of facility, it is gonna cost that. So there are some funding sources that have been identified, but there are more funding sources that will be needed. And I wanna be very transparent with the board on that, um, because it will cost us to, to build this type of building. But I don't think it's gonna be ten years down the road. This is something that is definitely a priority for us at this point.
So I wanna clear up the dichotomy here.
Say one more, I'm sorry.
I wanna clear up the dichotomy here. There is a need. Now you're saying there is a need, and you're saying there's funding. So why don't we just bid it out as a design build and let's move on it, instead of the 159? So at one point, we're saying, we don't have the money, this is gonna cost this, we just need to do the feasibility study to see if there's a need. And then I'm hearing, there is a need. We know there's a need, there's a need for all of our facilities. So the point that I made at first is that we should just bid it out. Alex has stated as well, we have the money. So, yeah, so I don't know.
Madam Commissioner, we do also own the land, the land is ours.
Yeah, so we could, yeah.
But, but Commissioner, I wanna be very clear. There are a lot of properties that we look at that we believe, hey, this property will be conducive for what we're trying to do. Until we can go out and do an environmental assessment on property, we don't know if that property is gonna be feasible. So I want to make sure that you all have all of the facts, so that if the consultant comes back and says the tract that we, we presented is not conducive for what we're trying to do, then we will have to look at other land. My desire has always been for us to identify county-owned property. Whenever we're looking to build county facilities, I would rather utilize property that we already own, because this board has said, we have properties that are sitting out here and we're not doing anything with them. So that has been the desire since day one. I think that is why Alex recommended this parcel of land. If this land works, that's fine, but I also wanna make sure that we know what our needs are. And we are not the experts in terms of determining what all those needs are. I can say to a consultant, we have fifty-one people on payroll today, but if we're looking to plan something for the next five, eight to ten years, we need to make sure that we're planning for that growth, and that's one thing that we have not done as a county, plan for future growth.
So Alex, is this the environmental study?
Yes, ma'am. Th- this is a feasibility study, and it will include an assessment of if this is suitable.
And I think that's what Commissioner Wilson was stating. Where is the list of what this is going to include? And, and if we could see that, then that'll be better, 'cause if I know that this is just to test the ground, to see if this, that's different than a feasibility study of need.
We can provide the scope of services.
Yeah, well, I need to see, 'cause I don't see any of that.
Alex, do you have your presentation? Look at paragraph two, where it spells out the scope of services will include an analysis of the existing field operation departments and their projected space needs to the following departments. The analysis will also include a proposed LEED certifiable building, including green infrastructure, identify possible building locations, and the consultant will provide a 3D animated presentation. So that's the, the initial scope. If there's something more that we want the consultant to include, we can include that in there. We just need to spell out what you all are looking for.
Yeah, I think Alex, you should go back and put everything in there for the 159, so that we're not coming back, having them to update and ask for more money. Um, if it's the feasibility of, you know, blowing the ground, making sure that, that, 'cause once you do this, we'll know what can go on this land, since it belongs to the county. So I would like to see you get the most out of the 159.
Yes.
And I think you should go back and make sure we include all of that.
So we can't use it for that, we might be able to use it for something else.
Correct. But it doesn't say that they're gonna do that.
Chair, now, would they consider other areas as well as this one, or would this 159 be just for this one area? Would they consider looking at other areas that we own as well, under this 159?
The, the way that this is written, it appears that they will look at possible building locations. I need to have the whole package. I don't have the entire scope.
Okay, thank you.
No, she doesn't have that.
She's, she's, she's not sure.
She's not sure, but can't you write it in, that they would consider more than this, this one site if we approved the 159?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly can.
So if this site turns out not to be what we want, they have another probable site that we can use?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can, uh, Commissioner Wilson, will you consider withdrawing your motion and, um, give an opportunity to have them to come back and present it to the board with the additional information that has been requested by board members?
Yes, I'll consider withdrawing that with, uh, we'll table it and come back with an itemized list of things that we expect this feasibility study to cover.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna table this item for right now.
So Chair Harrell, that was a motion, so you, oh, sorry, you need a second.
Okay, that's a motion. You, you got a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And just bring it back to us, Alex, with all of the detailed information for the board members. Thank you so much. Okay, next item is Angel Miller Dublin of Bear, D E, appeals the denial of a variance, public hearing, District Two.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, this item before you, um, it stems from a variance request that was denied by the zoning advisory board back in November. Uh, this subject property is a flag lot on Stone Road, as illustrated on the overhead. It's actually a rather large piece of property, it's fourteen or fifteen acres, but the frontage of the property is almost exactly sixty feet. Sixty feet is the minimum frontage that our ULDC allows for a piece of property in Henry County. The applicant is proposing to split the flag lot into two pieces, as illustrated on the overhead, and also in your exhibits. This would, this would give both proposed parcels thirty feet, which is half of what the ULDC requires. So in other words, if this were to be allowed, it would take a property that complies with our ULDC, and it would render it, uh, non-compliant with the way that it's worded, um, today. The applicant has been advised that, um, the proposal for a second house can be accommodated on this property without splitting it if it is a guest quarters, which means it can't be rented out, it can't have its own address, and so forth. It, it would just be an accessory dwelling to the primary, uh, house that would be located on the subject property. Um, but the applicant has requested the variance. The zoning advisory board denied the variance and staffs recommending denial of the appeal. I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Uh, this is a public hearing. So we have persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant. We have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board. Is there anyone here? Okay, so can you please state your name?
My name is Troy Dublin. Uh, my wife, Angel Dublin, couldn't be here today. She's under the weather, so I'm here representing, and, you know, bear with me, 'cause I'm not a public speaker like she is. She's more elegant than I am. But, um, we purchased, we purchased the, the lot June two thousand and twenty-one. There was a miscommunication by the representative of the zoning staff, which led us to believe we could subdivide the land. We didn't, we did not find out until after the purchase of the land that our property being a flag lot with only sixty feet road footage, that it, that it was not possible to subdivide. So I'm here today really asking for mercy from the, the Board of Commons, the, the Commissioners, you know what I mean? Like, all we really wanted was to have our family together, and this crazy time as well, as you know how it is. We, when we bought the land, we visualized our family being together, and that's what the whole purpose of our subdivision was about. So, uh, I'm here really for, ask for mercy on that. So we, like he said, we would like to provide, uh, sharing the sixty-foot footage driveway with the joint access assessment requirements of subdivision for the two lots. And there are lots on Church Street which butt up to our property with thirty feet road footage, driveway. So our variance request is asking for some, something much different, something much different from the properties that are buildings that is up to ours, or that butt ups to our buildings. That's really what I'm here for. We know, we know that the zoning board has stated a few times on excess dwelling, second home, guest house, pool house, mother-in-law suite, granny suite can be permitted on the property without splitting, without splitting it to the need of the variances. But our response to that is the same. The challenge is, if my sister wanted to get a house built on the, on the lot, there's no way she can require a mortgage for a house on a lot not owned by her. So it's unrealistic for someone to have an extra two thousand, three thousand K, or whatever, to take to build a home and replace of, of a mortgage. So, that's what I'm here for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone here wish to speak in opposition? Okay, come forward. Sir, can you have a seat?
Okay.
Hi. My family purchased, um, a lot in nineteen eighty-four. They purchased the lot zero five seven.
Excuse me, would you state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Teri Tregaser, and I'm for the Palmer family. My parents purchased the land in nineteen eighty-four. They too own a flag lot, and our only concern about approving the, the division of the flag lot is that it might set a precedence for other flag lots to request the similar approval. And we were surprised at the map, the aerial map and the tax map. Just looking at the map, there's over two dozen other flag lots just on that map. And so our only concern is, uh, if there would be other people, because of the precedent set, if other people would request a division of their property. That was, that's the only thing that we're asking for consideration. Thank you.
Does board have any questions, comments? Oh, you have someone else that wants to come and speak? Can you state your name, please?
My name is Jean Dykes, and I also have a home on Stone Road. And, um, I came to find out what this was about, and I understand what he's saying. But you can sha- have a shared driveway as long as there is an easement signed by the homeowner that allows you to, to have, to use the shared driveway. So in other words, the first person to build their home on this flag lot would grant an easement to the second person to use the shared driveway. And, um, I don't see why, if they're family, why that couldn't, they can't work that out. Because you can get a mortgage if you have the easement to share that driveway.
Thank you.
But, Madam Chair, i- if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a statement. Henry County requires that for a lot split, that a property have at least sixty feet of road frontage. So whereas it may be possible for a person to, to deed off a bit of property, if it doesn't have that, um, that frontage, it would not be approved to be recorded. Um, so in other words, um, it's not the county's policy that a simple easement to a landlocked tract would suffice for approval.
So I'd like to call for a motion to approve the... No, you cannot. Um, I'd like to call for a motion to, um, to approve the appeal for the denial of a variance.
I got another discussion. Um, Stacey, so they are allowed to go ahead and build another house on the property? I wanna just be clear that our code allows them to do that?
Yes, our code allows for a primary house, and it allows for a secondary house. But that secondary house has to be on the self-same parcel, which means that that person would not be able to get a second, a, a different mortgage for that house.
Well, that would be up to the bank, because they could also put the...
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
They could also put the land up for the mortgage, and they could get a mortgage for a second house, so that, that's, I don't want us to get into that. Um, I'm looking at our attorney, we don't need to get into that. That would be up to the bank. But that is something that the county does not control, but we do control our code and ordinances, and we have to deal with that.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So I just wanna make sure that it's stated that we're not blocking them for building another house on the property.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just upholding our code, um, and our, um, ordinances.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So I couldn't get a motion. So, uh, the motion failed.
And, and Madam Chair, I think that the resolution is written such that, I think it is, that the, um, the denial is sustained or the denial is overturned. So either way, um, as long as there's a decision, um, I think that would suffice.
So can I get a motion for? Can I get a motion to follow our ordinance? Is that what you're asking?
Either one. Isn't that what I just? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My apologies, I'm sorry. I thought you said, uh, just a motion for, I didn't hear the second part. My apologies.
We're, we're not getting a motion for or against.
So I think you all need to take, the action that you all are asking is to either overturn the zoning advisory board's decision, which would uphold what staff has done, or if you don't want to overturn it, then you're going to do a motion to approve it, or to not overturn, which would allow them to subdivide the lot, not meeting the county.
That's what I said, for or against. So I can't, can I get a motion?
But it's not for, it's overturning. So you're either going to overturn or not take, and if you don't take any action, they can't do anything.
Right. Okay. So we're not taking any action.
Which, which leaves the case open.
Okay, all right.
Well, it leaves the, the... County attorney. It leaves the zoning advisory board's decision as is.
Not necessarily, because you all have an appeal process in the county code, which means the zoning advisory board made a decision, and our county code allotted them the opportunity to appeal to this board. So this board needs to make a decision.
Okay. I make a recommendation to uphold to the staff's decision. To support, I would like to make a motion to support the zoning advisory board's decision.
Okay, so we got a motion. Can we get a second? Got a second from Wilson. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an ordinance by Henry County to amend the Unified Land Use Code of...
Good morning, Chair, ordinance, citizens of Henry County. The item before you is a staff-initiated ULDC amendment to the supplemental standards for self-storage facilities and the prohibited uses of the highway corridor overlay district. The proposed amendment, well, there's two amendments. The first amendment is to the supplemental standards of the self-storage facilities will require all self-storage facilities to be developed in a manner that mirrors indoor Class A commercial office space. Additionally, all self-storage facilities shall have architectural design elements consistent with the highway corridor overlay district, Chapter Four, Section 4.05.06. H. The second proposed amendment to the, is the prohibited uses of the highway corridor overlay district, Chapter Four, Section 4.05.06. B, which will include all self-storage facilities, use automotive sales, and require all car washes to be the primary business and within a commercial building. If adopted, self-storage facilities currently in development and/or navigating through the zoning process are vested and will be allowed to move forward if approved. Staff is recommending adoption of all proposed elements, amendments. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Go, go, go back. Commissioner Thomas?
My concern is how he's listening to different things. It makes me feel like we've got to list everything. We've got to find a way to be included, like quasi-medical, things that could be done in self-storage and what have you. I'm concerned about the wording. I agree with what you're trying to do. I'm concerned, and attorney, you need to tell us that we need to find some other wording to make sure these other type of businesses do not find a loophole and get theirs there, is what I'm asking.
Okay, so if I, if I'm understanding your concern correctly, the way this is written is just the red lines from what is currently in the ULDC. So the prohibited uses section, right now, it reads that self-storage is allowed in the highway corridor overlay district if it mirrors Class A commercial office space. So us taking that red line through that portion basically takes self-storage completely out of overlay. No, no traditional self-storage with the garage doors and bays, and no self-storage that mirrors the office style. So we're taking it completely out. I, I put this here just to show the red lines of what's changing.
I have a question about vehicle sales.
Yes ma'am.
Are they, this is confusing. Are they in or out?
So used vehicle lots are out, new vehicle sales are in.
Okay. How does that work when you have a Tesla that wants to come in the overlay corridor, and they have used cars and new cars?
So typically, the way we differentiate them is if they are selling new cars, they can still sell the used cars as well, but the main use of the, of the business is new car sales. So I think that the intent of taking out specifically used car lots is because, you know, we've come to the point where people don't want to really see them in the overlay.
Yeah.
So we, we're just, like, new car lots can still sell used, used cars. It's just their main purpose will be new cars.
Okay. I'm trying to find a way where we can get the wording correct. I'm agreeing with what he's doing, but now I'm having a problem with the wording. Can you make sure we got it clarified, so that people beyond us can understand it as well?
I understand, I don't understand what you want out, but I do understand more clarification of wording.
And we can, we can approve the wording on the statute and what have you, but I just need some specification regarding, you don't want anyone to look at this and think they can actually do a traditional self-storage, is what you're saying, or?
If prohibited use of self-storage, many warehouses or warehousing and distribution not currently zoned for these uses, M1, M2. I, I don't know what else you can put in there. It's saying it's prohibited.
So perhaps if I can get the overhead, I have a, I, this is how, this is exactly how it would look in the ULDC amendment without the red lines. So it basically reads self-storage facility, I mean self-storage, self-service storage. But those red lines aren't there anymore, and it's just putting it as a prohibited use. So this is, in my opinion, the simplest way to do it. And this is the way it's written in the ULDC now. We just took out the red piece that was in the parentheses, that allowed the office self-storage. So, so basically, I don't have an example with me? No, no self-storage at all would be prohibited. So, so what we're seeing now, like the Jonesboro Road case coming up soon, with the office style, the indoor facilities that you see pop up a lot now. I don't have an example with me.
I would need to see that.
Okay. Yes ma'am.
I have a question about the office style, the ones that are already in existence. What happens with those?
They're, they're vested. So they're grandfathered in. And any that are in the process now of going through a rezoning, or going through development plans, they're good to go. It's just, if this is adopted after today, we would not accept any more in the overlay.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Call for a motion to approve. I make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, got a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for the May 17, 2022 regular BLC meeting. I'd like to call for a motion for approval of the minutes. Got a motion? Got a second? Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor. Upcoming meetings, June 21, 2022, at 6:30 is a regular scheduled BLC meeting, and July 6, at 9:00 a.m. is a regular scheduled BLC meeting, moved to Wednesday due to the holiday. Or June, July 6. Any announcements from any commissioners on any events coming up? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Yes.
Oh.
I need, I'll for two comments, and then on the ULDC amendment, I don't believe we called for public, for a public comment, and that was a public hearing. So we'll just need to open the floor for any public comments, and if there are none, we can close it out.
Okay, all right. Anyone wishing to come to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to come to speak in opposition? Okay. And Sheri, you had, had an announcement before we adjourn?
Just two quick comments I wanted the board to be aware of. On May 25, I received an email from City Manager Frederick Gartner notifying the county that beginning on July 1, the City of Stopbridge would transition into, in their own police services. Our Chief of Police, as well as our emergency management team, has been in dialogue with the city, but I wanted you all to be aware of that in case you have questions that come from your constituents. So on July 1, Henry County Police will no longer be policing within the municipal boundaries of the City of Stopbridge. And then I wanted you all to be aware that we are required by law to renegotiate our loss, which is our local option sales tax. I have prepared a letter for Chair Harrell's signature to send to the cities to identify that we are in that period, but we also have to notify all municipalities no later than June 30, that we do have plans on renegotiating. I am hopeful that we will get through those negotiations in a peaceful manner, but we will be required to have a sequence of meetings that may be outside of our normal board schedule. After this meeting, I'll get with Chair Harrell to see if maybe we could possibly have something on the 21st, since we already have a board meeting, because we will have to have one meeting with the cities prior to July 1. So just be on the lookout for any and all emails pertaining to loss negotiations, and I will do my best to make sure that I provide the board with at least a white paper in terms of what loss means, and obviously it is our sales tax, and what we will be expected to do as a county. And that's all the comments I have this morning. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.